I'm so worried. Yeah, we didn't think about what's going to happen. What they're going to do. And then, and then it was. She won.
I don't know. Right?
See? Me cheering. Girl, God, this thing is the same. I'm often there as soon as you're there, I mean. It goes.
Okay.
We're gonna be able to.
We're gonna call this a meeting, I'm saying.
You know, just. Okay, right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So that. We have to figure out which is fun. I'm glad I'm here. You got. Seriously, you can't close it. And thank you. I want to look. I don't know. All of them. That's kind of true. Sixty six. Which is. Eighty. One. One. Do you believe in you? To set your career.
I mean, imagine. Follow me.
Something.
Oh, yes, totally. It's. I'm gonna. Well. She. I didn't. I don't know. I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know, I think she. We should. We should. Oh, it's. I'm sorry. She. She. I'm not. I'm sorry. We're just. We're just. So. It'll be. It'll be. It'll be. We're. We're. I don't know. Do you want? I think. This is. Sorry. I'm just. I'm just. So. Sure.
Who are saying? You're so.
Sure. I'm just. Why don't I hear myself? Those. She. She. That's all. So. The. That's. I'm just. What? Oh. I'm starting to lose. I'm just. I'm just. We're gonna go on. We're. I'm. Good.
Open the transition. Counsel. All the first. Was a plan. We. We're.
On. All. You're the one. I'm in. I say this in. And two. Which is saying is one nation. When. This is for. Thank you. Okay.
Motion. We.
Make a motion. For. Second.
Nine. I was not gonna say anything.
I'm. Vote to approve consent agenda.
I made a motion for consent agenda. That's. We're gonna go to them. Oh. Yes, Paul, I have a question. I'll be her voice for the moment. Um, on the bills, Bob Rogers, Quikage four twenty six eleven. That was for us to buy the new Quikage. What's the story with that? Anybody know anything?
If that's the Quikage, then Gary and I want to learn. And actually, it's already.
Someone. Jake. The one that Jake wanted.
It didn't work.
It didn't work. So what did we do with that?
It's still something you can check. Until we figure out.
Jake, did we ever pay for that? So it's really yours to sell. Get rid of. So you'll do that. Sorry. Yeah, sorry. Thank you. It's been a long meeting, guys.
We're having public comments.
You're right, we need to. It's about.
Public comments. Andrew, do you wanna get up and tell me where we're going here?
Sure. My name is Andrew Senter with Boltwood. They can't. They're working on the. Console improvement project. Um. The bids were received last Wednesday on the seventh. And. Responded. And, um. So we had a little. Hold up. The agenda for review. And consideration of this needs to be pushed to the meeting in March. So that proper public notice can be provided. And I was on the agenda. It's one of the things that is new with the SRF. Uh, the state revolving on loan process is you have to provide a legal opinion on your procurement process. And we just, Wendy and I talked to the attorney this afternoon, and she flagged this as a potential issue. So we're gonna make sure everything is is right. All the processes are in place so that this, um, Allers and Cooney law firm will write the, uh, document that says we followed all the rules in the SRF to give us a loan. Give the city of Grand Junction a loan. So, um. So tonight is the, um, approval of the plans and specs and cost of the union. That's one big item of the project. Another item is fixing the public hearing date and time and place for, uh, the public debt or the the loan from the state to pay for the project. So those are the two items on the agenda. Um. In the future, we'll have, uh, the review of the bids, our letter of recommendation to award the contract. And, um, the actual, uh, notice of award that goes to the contractor. We send that notice of award after if council approves it. Uh, we send that to the contractor along with, um, like copies of the agreement. That is between the city of Grand Junction and the contractor. They will, um, get their bonds and insurance, um, and return signed copies of the agreement that will then be on another council agenda item to, uh, approve that. Um. I guess, uh. You have, and then the issue to notice proceed after we receive those items. So there's a few more steps in the line. There's too many steps, it seems like, to get, uh, you know, a project going, but that's just the way the state laws are. So.
Is this moved to meeting?
This is. Yeah.
Thank you. Paul, Wendy. Thank you. We're gonna vote on resolution number. Twenty twenty four. Dash. Two one two dash zero nine. Adopting plan specification. Form of contract estimation estimate of cost for the waste warning treatment facility.
I'm ready to leave now. We're on the board after. Good one, both after.
I'll second that.
All right. All right.
Okay, now we're going to open. Public meetings. Um. Sorry. We're gonna vote on resolution number twenty twenty four dash. Two zero or zero two one two dash zero two fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of the loan and dispersment agreement and the issuance of not to exceed one million dollar sewer revenue and capital loan notes of the city of Grand Junction, state of Iowa, providing for publication of notice thereof.
And we're wanting to do this public meeting February twenty sixth. February twenty sixth. The public meeting. At six o'clock.
Take the floor to the public hearing for the first item. So the approval of the plans, specs, uh, formal contract and. I don't know. You have to open that public hearing and then close.
He was gonna close it now.
Okay.
So I. I say that we vote. Make them. Make them, but I don't know what to do. Make a motion. Uh, I made a motion for resolution number two zero four dash three one two dash. So. Fixing the date of meeting on.
Sorry.
I'm just. I'm gonna close the public meeting. Vote on the removal removal of Michelle Hellman and Mary Miller as signees on the city's bank account. Add us. Dennis. Add Dennis Jacobs as a senior on the bank accounts. Need a motion.
Make a motion that we vote on removing Michelle Hellman and Mary Miller as signees for the bank account and adding Dennis Jacobs.
I second. I. Second.
Need a confirmation. But Spencer Ray on. In the fire.
Wendy, did we have? Did you? Did you hold a public hearing on the plans and specs and formal contract estimate cost? That was one thing that wasn't explicitly listed on the agenda that, um, A. Allers and Cooney said we need to have a public hearing held on. So to say we opened a public hearing for, it's agenda item A.
So I just haven't opened the public hearing at the right time.
Okay.
It's all exhibit. Yeah. Are so. Were you kidding? Or are you saying that it wasn't done as you said? What?
Just for, yeah. But what if you started? I don't think the public hearing was held on the form of contract. Um, the plans and specs and the estimate cost. I think we need to, if the mayor could say that, we're having a public hearing on those items that you crossed.
The public hearing has also included the specification form of contract estimate cost.
Okay.
For the waste treatment facility improvements.
Is that?
I'm gonna head south.
So it's open and then if there's no college, then you close it and say no dominance. Yeah.
I'm. Spencer Ray. Okay, we're gonna close the public meeting.
So just a minute. We've got a lot of bases to think.
As far as, yeah.
As far as.
Sure, but yeah.
No. See, it went back. And you can convert it. Be for. Jane. So now we're on the Spencer Wright thing. Okay.
Mike officially Spencer the P K before.
It's just a second. I mean, he must live here. And actually.
It's in the train of order.
He's currently fired.
Central. He was out.
What's that? Who's that buyer side?
It's. Yeah. Bar. Yeah. So he'll be certified and buyer. I think he's also getting his A M T, and I think he wants to be this paramedic. So to us, he. Eventually, he's probably.
Gosh, okay.
Twenty eight, I think. Um.
But don't think we need to have. Sorry. Thank you. Okay, I made a motion. Yeah, Spencer Wright. Jake, oh, second. All right.
Discuss. When? You send. Gary must get some. CPO class. Who's in trouble?
You guys, I mean, could you send pause to see?
Thank you, Suzanne.
I.
Terry, yeah. Is that possible? Really?
Maybe, yeah. Down there, we've done the job. We just need to make sure it's okay. And, you know, I've been, I made a motion. Could we go ahead and send them to CPO?
I second. I.
I'm gonna stay. In March. It's in March. Twelve to thirteen. Twelve to thirteen. It's like a two day thing. And CPO class, you get certified, it's good for five years. Yes. It's a five year. So I mean.
Just that.
Okay. Discuss and vote on resolution number twenty twenty four. The year two one two, the year three, secondly. By the end, you're moving to second. All in. And discussion.
I don't need. You guys, you guys.
Right. Right. It's just.
This is just something that kind of we put. Well, I picked all the way kind of put together. It's not, it's obviously not written. And it's not to look at. And let's talk about, you know.
Then what? What do we have on this?
Four six days.
Four days.
Four six days a year. We also added two personal days to this. So then, you know, a lot of times that they have. It's giving people.
We have to call on that. Of course, no, somebody should come along. The Lord is healthy. You should get him to talk. Jason, you're wonderful.
Well, then. Better than what we got now. Right.
And I feel like it gives a little bit of clarification on things. And I think it's. I feel like this is fair. You know, it's not like we're cutting them out or anything. Personal days. A lot of places are offering those personal days that can be used, so. Forget it. Yes, I'm out there. Let's see what you think.
I'm saying I made a motion to vote on resolution number twenty four dash three one two dash three. Okay.
Just a second. He's the only one who's been here. Here, so. He was in up there. After. So will we make her stretch home? I do. To when she started the year.
Yeah.
Did you hear what she said?
Yep, you guys. Yeah, yeah.
Jake. You didn't cut. Um, Wendy. Wendy's year up was year was up in October. So we're gonna make, if we go with this, we'll make Wendy retroactive to doing that. That's all that Paul was saying. It makes sense. Yeah, so. Um, I'm going second.
Okay, we're discussing. Go. And actually, we're all in the way for our. We. You know. We're gonna deal with life. Been pretty back and forth or. From. Throw out. Yeah, okay.
Right.
It's discussing, uh, we've got two days. Help from the life plan. Time called the snow. You know, for food. Anything about. Food. Where the food's paying and we look for more. Kind of.
Yeah, just a second. We ended just in time to discuss.
Finally.
Second, Paul needs to say something. So it's my slight question. Last year, we have made two winning. And we may be on. Which we have. Just three others. Three. One. The three other people that have to do this. And. How did? In the past of San Fican. First day of blizzard is when we were. To get the roads open. Then after that, our city guy goes to work and opens up the the places that are supposed to be opened up. That's his job. That is what he's hired for, to open those up. We have help long after that. Why? Why is we have help long after when I'm city guy? That's what I want to know. Our city guy went home and we have other people help. Whatever.
I don't. I think I'm. Said. But did we? We res- did we receive any letter? From the life plan? The after hours? If we use their land after hours, they're gonna charge us a certain amount of money.
We received a letter, yes, that I think if we use. Was it after hours or was it during light plant hours? And they were gonna charge us X amount of money. Forty hours. Okay, so why would it be? Why would after hours affect them? Why? This guy is not, uh, not working at the light plant those hours. I mean, you don't, you don't say it, Jerry?
Yeah, I know.
So why does that make sense to? Does it make sense to you or am I just thinking this is?
Didn't. Didn't really make sense. That's the reason that we. Hired Kelly. For.
And so you hired Kelly on your own? And it was Kelly you hired? But he was always supposed to work from like. Light plant hours, seven thirty to four. So four oh one, he can start working on his own. He was an independent. Right, so the light plant has nothing to do with it. Now, we needed him to come at two o'clock in the afternoon. That. What's the story?
The first forty eight hours.
But. After that, we still have. You tell me why? Why do we still have to call? Why was it all? Out there? Okay. So why do you need those ropes? They were one in a pile of cars. Why? Why?
The reason why I was at home was because Jerry pulled us off that night because we couldn't really see. I told. I told Kelly. Then Jerry pulled us up. And Kelly kept on going.
Okay. Jake, did you not say that you had a alley of two that needed cleaning? Did you? I was the son two that needed clean out. It's after the storm. The storm.
And it got cleared.
By you?
Yes.
I thought. Kelly's.
Nope. They got cleared by me. All the alleys got hit by me. I either did it with the tractor or in the pickup.
How did our tractor get broken?
The hired hand that Kelly had, I guess, from the story that I got, he went too fast over the tracks and didn't realize the blade wasn't up all the way. And crap. That's the story that I got.
So a guy. Just as I can, Jerry, what did you know how the tractor was getting broken? Is that the same story?
Yeah. Tell.
And what? What story is that you heard that Kelly's hired?
I'm. Yeah. I'm gonna talk to Kelly. I just Kelly, we. I'm gonna, everybody was worked up. It was full of snow. Everybody was trying to do what they could. Uh. But that has to be kind of cleared with the council. On. And. That's. That's.
So. We talked that we were gonna have one guy that we were gonna hire to help because, you know, after hours and during hours, you know, that's a trade for the light plant to help us. We appreciate it. But then we ended up with two more besides that, one of whom broke our tractor. Who was in charge? Who was in charge?
I had no idea that. I didn't know.
Why did you not know? Are you not in charge of what's going on?
I just knew, I knew that Mikey, in fact, I saw Mikey. I didn't know he was on. He stuck down there and I says, we've authorized this. And he said, I'm hoping. Well, Kelly drove me to go. Nice. Kelly and I had this talk like we're right now. I says, Kelly. Uh. This, this can't happen.
Yes, and they were a little too, a little too late.
It was, uh. It was. It was bad at that time. And everybody was trying to help her. I said, well. Our original deal was, you know, what? Where I ran after now. Well, I think Kelly paid out of his own pocket. I don't know what happened. I had no idea.
My understanding that the bills came in. That the, the, the hours came in that we're supposed to pay. And it's my understanding that the, um, fire department had this call during this blizzard and it was not hot. This is correct. Can you tell me about that?
We said, we had a blizzard. We had a call out. Nothing exactly when it was, it was pretty late. Because Garrett and Brian came up in a side by side and they were, because they were just out. And they pushed the snow away from the door just because they were out.
They should could even count.
Right, they wouldn't have been able to. And by the time we got up there, they had our building and they said they wouldn't have. We probably would have got stuck asleep in the building.
So it's my understanding that the fire department was not plowed out then. And who did you, do you know who was called in that case? I mean, we can't have this happening, we've got to have our fire department go out.
What do you think Jason called anyway or not?
Did they call you, Jerry? I had, this is what I had heard. Whether it's true or not, I'm just going, heard, they'd heard that you had been called. Um, no answer there, whatever reason. Um, I heard that Nate had been called and you were down for the night, and so you didn't go back. Um, is that true?
So, he called, misses. I cleared it when I made my passes through here, I swung in, cleared it best I could. With as heavy as it was coming down, I made my passes, and each time I come back, when I, when Jerry pulled us off that night, I was at home, I had not got called to come clear nothing. And it said, when Jerry saw like Kelly, so he got the other tuna that we were being pulled. It was up on Kelly that he stayed out.
I'd be interested to know from the fire chief, how this went down, because we can't. I don't care.
Oh, state portal and county portal? And we had to see that his orders were made for fire.
Right. Right, and you know?
I don't, it's snow, it's very sad, I don't know what.
Well, I, I just assumed, snow really far, and I need the ambulance to get to my house. I just assumed they'd be able to get out, sure, it's not going to blow. That's, I mean, if it's not part of responsibility, then it's time to make sure that these people, that they find.
Too snow, we had twenty-two inches of snow, and really good, isn't it? Really good, and a lot of on.
Well, I had two comments that weren't too good. Hey, I'm just telling you what I heard. And I'm just saying that I don't think this needs to happen. I think that this was a horrible thing to have happen. They should not have any, um, problems at all, being out at a fire station. And I don't care if, if everybody, if you can't get out of town, at least you've got somebody in your house that may be able to save your life until they can't get you someplace. And that was a call for, and it was terrible. And if the fire chief would like to call in, tell me what happened, love to hear it, or you can show it, hear it, because I heard that it was not a good situation, and we can't have this again. Okay, now, back to however much we're paying.
So, what do you think, Jerry, go?
Just a second, I want to know, before this snow hit, you had talked to Kelly's hiring new technical assistant. And that was hiring him as a private, um, light plant. So the light plant has nothing to do with what you went through to hire Kelly to help, correct? Or am I?
That's, that's true, you know, during his normal working hours, it didn't cost nothing. But after, which was she quit for, that we need help.
The contract isn't between us and the light plant, the contract is between us and him at four o'clock. So this whole thing with the light plant, I think, we need to see that letter again that they sent us that said, if you use our people, we're gonna charge you, what, forty bucks or something an hour? Because I don't feel like this has anything to do with the light plant.
No, not, not.
Scepting, or was Joe just keeping track of, or wait? And they gave them to you for that? Because she said we could take hold of it, is that how it went, or in which determine? For their benefit, for the interest?
I don't know.
It was, they, that was, that, those people that helped you.
You guys want any, any comments?
I don't know, Larry, go.
Plan since winter. This team. If, you know, during that time, they use, they use their eyes. If it was, it was for a couple, like two hours, they would need to charge us three plus an hour for each person we used through them to pay for their diapers and their shots and all that. That was the letter. So that's why we didn't want to do that.
Right.
Um, okay. Um, uh, Joe was keeping track of the hours and turning, seeing like, twelve hours, what is going to be, you guys, the copy, the paper that we just, I'm seeing like twelve hours overnight, and, and another twelve hours, I haven't spent, I mean, I only went, I think Nate came in at three o'clock. And you had, we've got light plant people out there doing their job, is that not his job? Is that not his job to, to be out there? No, it's not. I mean, yes, it's, it's, I get that you get tired, that's part, that's part of the job that we hired him for. Jake?
I was, well, I might have to read it again, but I was impressed that if we used him during light plant hours, it would have cost that.
It doesn't make sense what, what we're debating here.
Compusing.
I thought it was.
More light. Then we, we worked together, our street man and Kelly, who has been during working hours. After hours, the light board decided, the firm man was gonna go out and they were gonna pay him, it's gonna be forty dollars an hour. So, I didn't remember who was in that office with us. So, we decided to negotiate, and after he got off at four o'clock, when that confirms snowstorm, when the city would hire him. And that's what we were trying to decide, is how, hey, for a while, right? The other two guys, I, I just got, so that shouldn't need to enter into.
See, I don't understand, making this.
The dog, the owner, trying to go on this.
Yeah, it was the deal. We're, we're telling, as the light plant were doing, fires and stuff. So this forty bucks right here for all this snow removal is all in void.
Well, I'm sure it's more like, we take him during the day, and he does something, and then he has to do overtime with them to catch up what he was supposed to be doing.
So, but here's the deal, I know for fact, that's not how it has, what has been.
It's only, it's only.
So you're saying, no, that's not how, because then if you read this down here, we're also more than willing to help, so we're to blah blah blah. We just want, you know, to help, as long as our employees have the time to help. We're more than telling, other things during normal work hours, as long as our employee has the time to help. So if there's nothing going on with the light plant, Kelly should be able to help move snow from seven thirty to four. And that's up to his discretion, if he's got other stuff to do or not. Not us to say, hey, you gotta do it, that's what they tell you. So as far as concerned, these hours that Joe has come up with from Kelly, we've got to decide what we're paying, and I think that's what needs to happen. We did not decide, nobody decided, Roman, that we were gonna hire two slash or three people. You checked Kelly, I assume, and said, hey, Kelly, and he said, sure. And so, I, I don't feel like we should be paying two people, we.
But see, is this on, is this on Saturday or Sunday or something?
Twenty-first, it was on Sunday, January, uh, just from these dates, January twenty-first, just on Sunday. That was clearing after that, that's smart.
From seven, the thirteenth, I'll read again.
Yes, thirteenth of Saturday.
The sixteenth. Because it was during, only last after hours. He never did tell us a price. He says, I don't care, do anything, I'll do it for nothing.
I don't want to doubt anybody, but on January seventeenth, four P M to seven thirty in the morning, four P M to seven thirty in the morning, he was out, that's a, excuse my language, a hell of a long time to be out moving snow. I know that for fact, that's a long time, to do anything. And that day makes me mad, because where was Nate at? He's the guy that we have hired to do this. Why wasn't Nate out there doing some of this? And I, I, I guess, you just gave him free rein to, I mean, you just told Kelly to go out whenever he wanted to? Who told him to go out on like January twelve for three hours, or, or any of these times? You just said, hey, go do what you want, is that how it was?
I'm not saying that, I'm, so, oh.
Jake, did you, because I said, did you just, I don't really know. I was just Jerry and Kelly, to make her, Jake didn't have much to do with this part.
No, nobody said anything about the over time for Nate on a, on a blizzard. That, it got around while he couldn't. Because it wasn't, you know, we don't want overtime. We want overtime in the middle of summer when breaks is being mode, it's gonna be. So what has to be removed? They didn't say anything about no overtime.
Nate, has anybody told you you couldn't give a plant a roof and stuff?
This one here, I was really upset and kind of, I was compassionated, so.
Nate, has anybody ever had to have overtime when you're moving stuff?
Was there a reason, you didn't keep that one? Like on Friday, banana tree?
Other than the day that Jerry pulled you off when all the clouds were removed off the river road and that?
Moved up, and got all the roads open. And taking into consideration, I do have family and kids at home as well, my eight hours had been pulled, streets had been opened up. For one guy. It takes quite a bit.
That is part of your job, you want to stir that up when you do.
Yes, and like I said, the streets had been opened up, and I continued working on that under that shift.
Apparently they weren't open good enough because Kelly was out, opened it up.
You want to remember, everybody was working, there was a lot of snow and a lot of colds. And we got to the point, we had to pull them off because the county.
And we didn't tell anybody that we pulled them off. We just pulled them off, we, we, we didn't tell them. We didn't put out on Facebook, hey, we're pulling them off. Nobody knew we were pulling them off.
And like, that was one time that they, the trucks don't pull off, in the course of this.
And I guess that he is a new guy, and I get that he doesn't know how to plow this town. And I also get that we tried to schedule a meeting to bring him in and say, hey, let's help you, this was a mess. And you canceled that.
We, we didn't, we, when we got one done and come back, it was snow's hard, and the roof was full again.
Right, and that's why you keep going, especially on the main routes. That's what you do in a town. That's what you do. And we didn't get the help, we didn't give him any instructions at all, and how to talk this town? I thought, no, do you, Jake, do you have a go plow this town, how about you, what do you guys? I mean, you, um, Tom, if you have a snow plow, right? And you have a drive, do you have a plow this town? No, how about you, you ever done it?
I say I have not.
I mean, you need instruction, we should have helped town, and instead we just say, go, we ain't gonna be helping.
And also, also on stage, say, that Kelly's first year at the light plant was last year. I want you all to think how much snow we got this year. Even at one time last year, with snow in the city, in this town, one time. So part of this is, so Kelly didn't know, Nate didn't know. And now we're stuck with this, and, and what I want to go with, it just says twenty-five bucks per hour.
No, that's not what it says.
Well, that said that here, it's, we tell.
Right, I say twenty-five. And Wendy says that's too much, and it is too much. But that's why I'm forty-five, God. He says, I said, how much you want? Says, whatever you think, says I probably do it for nothing. Was his words, but I think it's, it's two ups for nothing.
But something has to change, this is not, this was not right. And it could have been really bad. If that ambulance hadn't been able to get to whoever they were supposed to get to, then explain that. Explain that to somebody, sorry, you can get them, say your husband that was having a hard time, just, roads are snowed and city guy went home and something. You'd have a hard time explaining that to me.
Get the tractor stowed, and the truck stowed, and everything stowed. You know?
This isn't just felt that time, Jerry, I get that in the middle of the weather, it's bad, okay? But what about these other, all these other storms did not obtain the wild particular big snowstorm?
What are these plows, no, you think everything will lie to you?
No, I, I, I'll tell you both. I guess maybe.
Well, if it's done, we can't change it, it's thirty hours, and the time they should do it. And time ability with Kelly. And and so, he says, well, thanks, I'm, so yeah, I'll.
So, what do you think is your paper? This guy, Kelly uses our equipment, our tractor, our truck, our vehicle, so what? I mean, I was thinking like twenty-five bucks an hour, so I have our equipment. Am I, Tom, what is it? I mean.
Like you said, it's all of our equipment.
Our fuel, our equipment, how much money do I pay this person for, is their time?
Right.
And if he gets twenty-five bucks an hour working with the light plant, that's, that's working water, that's working high power, this is moving snow. You know what I mean? Granted, it's, it's a sucky job, and I'm obviously not good at doing it, but I mean, I don't, I feel like it's a little less than working with high power lines, that sort of thing. Um, we're gonna hire more than Kelly, because Kelly works for the light plant. Then I think we better be having a butt on it, and we better be having out there to get some bids on it, or could be, end up being the, oh, someone's gonna get in trouble, Nate will be.
So, fifteen, I would say fifteen. I'd say.
Okay, so I, I, I'm thinking fifteen bucks an hour. So, I make a motion that we pay Kelly fifteen dollars an hour for sixty-three twenty-five hours. I don't feel like we should have to pay this other person our dollar pay. Who is Mike, yes, I don't feel like, he was not part of the.
So, he only had and so six hours. And it's just six hours, but I don't know, it must have been down sixty. Is there, we had two hours, one point five and two point five and this six point zero. And this is one fourteen, so.
And see nineteen's why when this guy meets at the light. I just don't feel like we hired. Make the man, the chair. Hired Kelly to do this, not this person.
And also there's this, here, he's, it's the only covered as well. I think it's wrong, but I, if they were help free service and we have to use their, their, for some reason, talk their hours anyway. How would you?
Yeah, that's the.
These are the things that understand, it's a baby liver, but.
Like a whole different kind of freedom or letter from the light.
From this.
I think the only thing that the light plant has to do with it is this is Jones' hand writing. He, Kelly must have had to keep track of the hours and then turn it in. But this is. Yeah, so when you're making a motion for your, Kelly and we paid fifteen dollars an hour for this, we're just gonna not do anything in that.
I, I always said I didn't want to, but somebody else started.
Somebody wanna say something about this mine and it just started to block ours?
I mean, this thing we live in, I mean, you can really do, but it's. Figure out.
Thank you.
And then comes on to all Kelly hired three, another company called Kelly. Speaker. So you haven't forgotten. Just this happens. We probably don't pay them and without further need.
This is the, this is the fulfillment of this, we haven't talked about it. Think we need to vote on it. I mean, it's, it's, we had verbal, he had, the mayor had a verbal agreement with Kelly and Kelly won. So that, that other one, you know, the board is not.
I'm fine with that.
There you go.
Everybody fine with it?
Yes.
You're a little bit forward on this. We get hit with the blizzard. How is this gonna be handled? Which is, this settled right before we ever caught him. This is only February. We can. Several more. How, how is this gonna be done?
It's likely from Kelly, one fifteen dollar, man, for being done at the light plant. While he's there, we're picking him. It's a trade.
Okay. And now just gonna determine who wants to go or who's Kelly. This is the first day of the storm. We were.
Well. Yeah, we should, we should.
Well, you, you know, you should ask him. What you're saying, yes, you or Jake should say, all right, Kelly, we need your help. Can you go out?
Hey. If, you know, I mean, we have a blizzard. Get, get it clean out, all this extra widening. His stuff, Nate should be able to do that. So then at that point, Kelly is only one deck if he's asked. And you're to ask him. Right? I'm.
You. You said. It's, we need Kelly, you will.
Yeah, sounds true.
And you will.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And if you go.
Perfect. Listen, you wanna ask per day, so if you ask him. The storm does go into two days, he still needs to be re-asked, so. But my question, the only thing about that would be is say you have to come out at ten o'clock at night. Does he stop at midnight? Does. Until the next, uh, day, seven o'clock in the morning, or I mean, that's something you need to set up?
If, if it's working.
He would stop at, he's working.
What time he needs to stop so he can get to his next job?
Right.
Yeah.
But like say it was on a Friday night, you got him at ten o'clock at night, does he just work all the way home at night? Is that, that'd be something you need to, I mean, this is. Get it done.
Exactly. He would need to be free, have free of move, free of value to situation.
If I'm looking at this argument, you're probably asking to stop because.
Well, look at you. I feel like, I feel like you two will know that Kelly's out there working. And you're gonna kind of be paying attention to what the heck's going on out there. So three hours later, maybe, you know, I would, if it was me, I'd call and say, hey, Kelly, how's it going out there? I evaluated it, wanted to head in, I think things are good. And then if somebody is, you called out, two hours here, it should be Nate. It should be help, it should be Nate. Nate should be getting up then and moving the snow early in the next morning, not keeping the city out there.
Cause if you started, what do you start? You can say it's a Friday night, technically, it's working business, Nate wouldn't be home on that.
Okay, you. Keep in touch with him. I mean, that.
Does the fire department, let's say fire department, have Nate's direct number? So they can call him when a call comes in, that, that the ambulance or whatever's gonna go out.
I don't know.
I know, I know you don't, but I feel like, I feel like that would make us like. Does that make sense to you guys that, you know? Nate's been out there pushing snow and he's gonna be pushing snow and it's, I mean, we all know that's gonna happen. But shouldn't the fire department have Nate's number so they could call him at three A M when a call comes in that they could need? I mean, I, I can tell you for a fact, I'll tell you for a fact. That Dean Lyons got called in the middle of the night to do this because they needed help moving snow out of.
Say we average six minute response time.
Well, him up there could get down.
Right, well, Jason, he must leave it closed, cause that. And.
There's something, there needs to be something, cause you guys have a problem. Call Jerry, then Jerry call Nate and then Nate, I mean, that doesn't seem right.
Right.
You know? Um.
Well, that's kind of the plan.
Exactly, exactly. There needs to be some kind of procedure here that happens to this.
And even if you guys, okay, you can get to my channels, maybe the. This is only just one vehicle. So he can still.
Start snow. Nate's probably could be helping, right? I've already cleared much anyway, and. If it's during daytime, Nate's gonna be out and clean it out. If it's at nine.
If it's at two o'clock in the morning, no, he needs to be.
Depends on situation. If it starts snowing in the morning.
And he needs to understand that we all have things. Yeah, go up and move it.
And I'm on fire department, Kevin's just a block, I'm wondering if he gets all. Time he gets everything out there. Then water one thing out there before you get.
Could go to where they own and still try to plow and get a little bit. And he, he still needs to be involved in that. I mean, he needs to, that's the quality of this fair.
How do you, would it be feasible to take the plow truck home? Like for nights that we're having snow or whatever? Cause then if he does get called and we do need to widen the street, he can just jump in the truck and it's Saturday, he's ready to go. Then he don't have to wait for the drive to wherever.
That's like one of the. That.
A dog from.
You have all those things.
Start and then cold, when there's a blizzard going.
Something to eat more delicious.
A week that I'm gonna.
Right, like, I'm sorry, I mean. Maybe, maybe with the max, it would probably add as half to be two nights, so I would say this opportunity should. None of them.
I don't know. Anybody else? Hey. You have a problem with that?
No, it's not safe. If he takes the truck, he's starting all the snow. I mean, it's setting time. He's gonna put the shovel.
You probably turn to the shovel, okay?
And the shovel say what?
I'll slot him a block.
So, yeah. All the things, they just feel like there needs to be something else because the person that gets called should be Nate to try and get out. And, you know. Um, not, not, you know, and granted, if these kids on the roadway or side by sides are being snow, go for it, you know? I don't feel like that's gonna happen all the way through ten.
Right.
If it's needed. But I don't, I'm, I'm gonna have to do it with Paula. I don't wanna be the one. Sorry, we can't get to you because it's snow, you know? When there, we could get a plow, you know, first we could get the plow. And I don't know what the best plan of attack is. Maybe it's something we also need to talk with. The whole fire department and say, okay, what, how can we do this so it doesn't happen again? About that.
Sounds like I can counsel the board here discussing. We will pass. Mayor, okay. Um. I picked up some tires. Do, do the double deal, pick up some tires and hold them in and on the way home, Nate brought home. A pallet full of coal patch. Cause uh. Get the time warm enough to start putting them risers in. We also got. Uh. Tire, mayor, won't answer my calls. Got a hold of another guy, he came over and assessed the trees. What's left to do. And told me that we want a bid for council approval on per tree basis. On that, I don't think we're gonna come up with that again.
Nate should be back, I believe he said on Wednesday. To come and do another drive around and then write everything down per tree. He's gonna give me a call when he comes back in town at base and go in there.
Jerry, I need you to talk to me about the risers. The risers?
Yes.
Okay, so. A few meetings back, we approved to, to three and a couple, I, it could be four. So those three risers haven't been put in yet?
Yes, I.
Okay, so those three are.
Thirteen more that's ready to go when it, there it warms up.
Okay, so we're gonna have to stop this conversation now. Who approved the purchase of thirteen more risers?
We approved, we approved the whole thing.
We approved three.
Four.
Three, we did not approve thirteen, did we Wendy? Asking it, we, we, they gotta get Wendy.
The risers are free to be done, a color as is needed. And then we were gonna get bill each time he got some done.
And totally not to.
Is that what we, is that?
Not to do it often because we could not. We couldn't afford to pay it all, so we.
Jake, are you in the, so.
Five more.
He's got five of them, right, we could pick those five up, put them down, paying for them. And then.
In the, in the, so we, uh. We, we bought a bunch of.
So he's like thirteen and, and he's stopping now until we get them put in.
But, I mean.
The times, we gotta dig, we're gonna have to dig those up. We're gonna come back and redo these. That would be the time if we had, was made. To, after you dig them up, put them in the riser in, fill them back in, you're done with it. And we, just let they get here before we get the risers put in. And you gotta dig them up. They'll do their work, they'll check them, they'll fill them back in, then we'll have to dig them back out again. We don't have the risers.
Okay, but he's talking about getting the risers put in now. These thirteen, why can't we ditch?
Well, so if you. Yeah, ability to.
Won't be digging it up again, right?
You'll probably. What if I can bring it level to the sound?
You see, so, so down this hole, you put the riser pattern, you can still open it up.
So. So your, your manual, that you follow with the ground versus stuff. Swiftly. Yeah, so. Say they come. Sure, it's three hundred fifty dollars.
But we don't pay for, we don't continue the building. It's just, it's only ten, four, we pay that much, we'll just pay for it. But use, get them and put it. And that is fine with him.
So before we order.
I would think so, but I think we need to vote on when we put them in up too. Cause I mean, we, let's forget like we have ten that need to be done right now, we're gonna get all ten risers now? I mean, I don't know what our budget can allow for that, or you know, where we're at with being able to afford that. Cause each riser is a different.
He's on, he's on.
But he's got thirteen made.
Right. I'm not worried for who.
Right, so, but I mean, if it's this high, it's a certain price and the one that's at, I mean, it's a different price.
You guys voted on the price, I said. Well, it was ten dollars a venture, something like that, it was higher, something like that. To build them all, but I didn't wanna do it, I didn't wanna pay for all that once, I just wanted to pay it to be used. He, he was approved to build them.
Are we using that coal patch, not what we did in the first place, getting potholes?
Did you hear what she said? The coal patch for the, the risers, or we filling through the potholes? It's not.
Just for you, with, with potholes, I told him the other day, it says, make sure you got plenty of propane, make sure your air booms weren't cleaning hole in. But till it warms up. Until it really gets warm.
Thank you.
For, for.
What it's warm at, like in the seventies?
Oh, it's.
Sixties?
Sixty, seventy.
I'm just curious.
It's not.
Great.
No, no, right.
She's asking about the potholes. Like right now, there's some ginormous potholes. So before we can fill it with coal patch, or we're gonna fill it like right now with something else?
They won't hold, they won't hold when it's seven, eight, nine, or better.
Not even like. Something that that would.
Five, four, I. Yeah, um. Here.
Yeah, J M's possibly.
Yeah. And I talked with Thor and Thor says, I told him, he says, you're right, somebody's coming around, aren't they? Teresa's paw, you know, they kicked it out, did it kick that dirt, sand out? Unless it's a real deep. But it's only these deep. Oh, if I can thirty year blind.
Paul is asking how some other towns are filling their potholes now. So they must be filling it with something other than.
They got a different machine than what we have. They have a heated. Burn, comes out heated. There's a machine that they do pull behind, I swear that drops it to the potholes and blows twines and heats the car up. Freeze, and they, their stuff in, so it all heaters together.
That answers her question, I think.
Council or anything in Los City? Great man.
You're on fire, bump, 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 bump. Yeah, I'm very soon, thank you for allowing. We got a bomb? She's at the conference room, Zach, that's all this. She was a lot of, well, Spanish. Larry goes out to. Had a couple people, she just opened the brain, and then so scary, but. Tennis is very good, um. I looked it up, the figure.
I looked up the figures back, I first started and went back. We've never had twenty people a day to run this monster. At the end of January, we had two days. One day we had twenty-six in and the other day we had twenty-eight. So, looking good there. Kids events go, uh, average four for these three Mondays that are the after school group. Lawrence Brenson's have been here. The little girls are lively, but it's good about this is all these kids live in their own brand of nutrition. And the way we handle that, we're nothing, so, first of all, handling that is based on the circulation of our parents. So, I think these rural, these kids have been hungry for, but like, they were actually got money in their papers, library. Sheets are day hair. So, we're trying to get them lined up where they live. With their moms and dads, we'll get credit. And also trying to really reach out to, you know. And I had, uh, there's a couple, the white kids, it's for the husband. But the husband came with her on Thursday evening. So, yeah, they took advantage of our labor. So, exactly. Association. Means there's meetings to attend and committees, but they have a lot of great events and they rotate around. Going to do something interesting in early April, first and second, it's called a steam butt. E D S. So, it's on the news, something like E D S should get a little extra bounce. Cause they have great outreach between having the air wings. They're pretty very good. So, the same steam bottles form that repeats it. This, they're doing a thing for two weeks. These three of them tour. We did, got like association people, but they're in each library for two days. It's designed to get us steam activities. And then in the summer, the library group is contracted with P B S to have these team, calling it steam better. Which will come to the fair terms and they'll be there the entire term of the fair. We'll open this up, set it up, it's gonna be over a hundred dish, so. It's more outreach and it's things we can do by coming together. I think some of this has been directed a little bit by the supervisors, wanting to see certain guidelines go to something specifically. But it's only, so, 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 figure out. That's it.